Thompson.
All right. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing today?
Good afternoon.
Good to be with you again. As Dr. Thomas says, we've been progressing the second part of our assessment in that building assessment zone looking at each one of your campuses. So tonight, we're here to kind of give you an in-progress look at where we are. And demographics is certainly part of the equation, but the physical condition of your buildings as they are now and how they might develop into some improvements that need to happen in the short term and in the long term over time is certainly the second half of that equation. So, as you said, really the purpose today is to kind of give you that overview of the physical condition side of it, recap demographics and facility utilization. That's a complex topic and it was introductory last time, so I'm sure you guys might have gone through there, had some additional follow-up question. Happy to answer those in that segment and then talk a little bit about takeaways. I am going to leave here with a little homework for you. As we prepare for that next interaction where we do look at options and goals, there are some things that you might want to start thinking about as individuals of the board and certainly as a group next time that we meet to kind of look at the overall goal of what we're trying to accomplish through a capital improvements plan, which is a long-term vision for Lawrence 55. I won't go through all the things that we went through last time, but it's more than just me looking at your facilities. There's a group of five dedicated staff and several other facility assessors and planners in our background going through and doing the assessment work for each one of these facilities. And that wouldn't, can't go without saying that your time is also valuable. So, Dr. Thomas and all of the district administration that have been involved, thanks for your time so far and certainly for the board's consideration of the findings thus far. So, again, just to recap, the overall process that we take when we look at and do a true assessment, a comprehensive assessment of any school district, is really we're looking at taking in as much information as we can to get all those facts and figures about anything from demographics, enrollment, and school conditions down. We also interview administrators and sometimes teachers as part of that process. And really, that's all meant to bring all the information to you guys in order to make a good concise, well-thought-out plan for the short term and in the long term. We're getting close to those with the completion of these milestones. We're getting closer and closer to being able to give you options for the completion of that plan overall. The district's been really helpful as far as getting all of the information from a building standpoint. We started with a very large questionnaire about what's going on in each one of those buildings, really try to understand how they're being used today, which is maybe not how they were designed, but how they're being used today because that really forms the basis of how you use your buildings and how those are utilized. In addition to collecting all of that information, we are going space by space, which is room by room, and looking at floor ceilings, windows, walls, everything that's inside the building and beyond. Also looking at the outside of the building and really compiling all of those things that we see in field with the information and the documents that we have received from the school district to really give that comprehensive view of kind of where we are from a school standpoint overall. What we're really trying to do is answer one primary question as a result of the physical conditions assessment, and that's how do we maintain our schools? How do we keep those schools up to date? And really, the reason that we want to do that first and foremost is to give you guys a baseline. What are the things that we need to keep the lights on over the next five to 10 years in each one of the facilities from a capital investment standpoint, but also from a maintenance standpoint? And how can we do that most economically for the taxpayers here in Lawrence County? So, the first, excuse me, the first thing that we always try to take a look at is we look at the categories that any school campus specifically would have that we need to evaluate. And there's five main categories. Within each one of those categories, there's probably 20 to 50 additional pieces of information, recommendations that come along with that. But we generally always look at the campus site from a vehicle circulation standpoint, from a water retention and detention standpoint, all of the components that go into traffic in a school site. So, we do look at school site. We also look at the building envelope. There's a couple of different areas that we do look at specifically. The school district had a comprehensive roofing report done a year ago, and that's included within the results of this report. Of course, we've converted that into this comprehensive study. But we're also looking at your exterior walls, your exterior doors and windows, all the other pieces of what we call building envelope, the thing that keeps the water out. That's really one major component of a building. Looking at interiors, the conditions of flooring, the conditions of ceiling, all the conditions of all the items that are on those walls that you use day in and day out, certainly looking at the conditions of those. Mechanical electrical plumbing system, which is also a very big topic. I know you've done some improvement through the years, but that's an ongoing task that we are always looking at for a school facility. That is often, in addition to building envelope, the most expensive part of doing any renovations or upgrades to a facility, especially when kids are in place and they don't have other places to go while you do those improvements kind of overall. So, tonight, we won't spend a lot of time on mechanical electrical plumbing systems. There actually is a study being done right now in conjunction with this, or some information that's being received in addition to this that'll make that side of it. We are in progress with at least that component overall. And then finally, health, safety, and security. I'm looking at the vestibules. We're looking at the code aspects of each of those campuses and how they fit into the mix kind of overall. So, when we're talking about assessments, I'm going to show you kind of the real high overview of where we are in those categories, but know that back behind the scenes, there are hundreds of thousands of pieces of data that are at the disposal of maintenance and facilities to really make and implement plans in the short term kind of overall. Within the assessment, it is also rated, and that's how we begin the prioritization process. One, which is that red figure, is anywhere from zero to, I believe, two years. You really need to think about and take a hard look at this item specifically. That's what that means. And plan that in your capital investment over the next zero to two years when you're talking about budgeting for that item. That ranges all the way from a one to a five. Five just means brand new, reassess in five years, see if there's any deteriorations or change within that item. There are about 268 items per school that we give you recommendations on, give the facilities department recommendations on to really base the facility assessment on those, in those five categories. Last thing I would say, kind of just overall as far as the process goes, the school district gets three main deliverables out of this. You're seeing one of those deliverables in front of you, which is the executive summary. It's an executive summary. It's about 110 pages long. It's a pretty big executive summary. But even back behind that, there are two additional reports that we've already shared with the administration and facilities department. The reason I point that out is because I want these facility assessments not to be something that's on a shelf somewhere that's not active. I want it to have some kind of value immediately for you guys and for the administration kind of overall. So, we've given them the deficiency reports, which goes item by item about what we found in the field, where those items are, and what the conditions are, and how, what a priority they need to be as far as the maintenance of those facilities. The second one back behind this is the facility assessment per school summary where we go into those, as I mentioned, 268 recommendations per school to really evaluate it there. And then finally, the executive summary that you have in front of you today. The executive summary also has some information about just the general age and condition and the demographics of each one of those schools. And we'll go through just an example there so that you can see kind of where we are from a summary standpoint today. So, how do we get started? Doing all that, making sure that our process is sound, making sure we have all the items that we need to go and uncover in the field. So, we did take several teams out to each one of your facilities, all nine of them, elementary through high school, and looked at each one of those facilities in depth with either an interview from the principal out there or some maintenance staff interviews that went along with those visits as well. I've got a little video on the screen. One thing that I have not mentioned is, you know, that same kind of idea about not sticking this on a shelf and making it something that can be useful right now. In addition, we have software that's available to the school district that they have access to, that contains everything that you see printed in front of you, but also all that background data as well. You can see the high school here in this example, lots of little boxes and lots of little notes all throughout that facility. But what we can do, and you can do from a computer, is really look at what those conditions are in the field, what's the photographic evidence of the conditions that we're placing on each one of those areas, and how are we categorizing each one of those zones? You know, it might be an outside soffit that needs some repair, or it might be inside, that's an old physics lab. I know that, and it had some ceiling problems. So, making sure that we document everything that's inside of each one of those buildings is really the key and core pieces of it. What we noticed overall in most of your campuses that have a long life, meaning they've been in operation for more than 30 years, you have a variety of buildings kind of overall, so you have a variety of conditions. The high school is a good example of this. You've got those pod classrooms right there in the center. You've done an update to the gym. You've added on to the gym over time. You've got those classroom additions in the back. So, while we might judge that entire facility as maybe a fair, meaning in good working condition, there are areas in which you would want to focus your improvements on, your maintenance on over time. Those buildings in the back might not have the same kind of assessed maintenance concerns that maybe some of the front areas have. So, it's meant to be as comprehensive as we can be so that we can get you good results and really understand it from that perspective. I say that all to say that there, and when we look at each one of those individual topics, you can see those on the far right side, site, building envelope, again, interiors, MEP, and health, safety, and security, you might get a fair, meaning it's in good working condition. And you should get a fair and good working conditions because, in fact, you are still in school in these facilities. So, even within the average number of three, which is fair, there are some areas that we would look for improvement kind of overall as we move forward. This is your elementary schools, the bubble. All of them have a rating of three, which is that average fair number. But even within this, you can see there are some areas that you might want to focus your attention on. First and foremost, Ford, for instance, has some building envelope considerations that you would want to make sure that you capture within the next two to three years. So, start planning for those. Make sure that those leaks are taken care of out there, for instance. That might be different than E.B. Morris, which has some health, safety, and security concerns. Those are just in comparison to existing codes. So, some ADA compliance issues that might not have been present when the building was designed and implemented as opposed to today where they're necessary for new construction. So, it's those balance of items in those two very different schools that we're trying to understand and put a value to overall. So, you can see here mostly are all threes. If you look at it from an overall standpoint, and if you go to the high school and middle schools and the two K8s, you can see fairly well consistent across the board regardless of age from an average standpoint. In this case, Gray Court Owens, building envelope is certainly one of the components out there, and we can go into detail and depth on that as well if you'd like to, just to see the detail there. That's kind of the 20,000 foot view of kind of looking at all the portfolio of your buildings for each one of those categories and each one of those assessments. Now, if we go to, and I'll just take a few moments before I pause and we ask, talk a little bit back and forth about questions and answers, I'll just flip to the first one and we'll kind of just go through that one overall so that you can get an idea of how this is put together. So, if I go to page 17, that is E.B. Morris Elementary School. The first couple of pages, the, you know, what it looks like from the front, of course, but then also the basic information that I wanted to point out is we spent a good bit of time talking about enrollment kind of overall for the school district. Each one of these facilities also has a historical enrollment, and so it's oftentimes very interesting to understand where it is from where it has been over the past five to seven years. So, you can see E.B. Morris itself has, if you look at its 45-day top graph on page 17, it's gone up and down a little bit, seems to be, seems to have recovered from the COVID decline and back up, or on its way back up to what it was several years ago. So, each one of these facilities, we look at two main enrollment points, the 45-day number and the 135-day number. And the reason for that is generally, elementary schools continue to grow, so the 135-day number is a little bit more accurate. High schools tend to graduate more people earlier. So, the 45-day number is more applicable when you're talking about it from a planning standpoint. And then, just briefly, as you go through, you see those five categories on the following pages, on pages 18, 19, and 20, where we might get an average score, but we're really pointing out some areas in which you want to really take a look at E.B. Morris overall from a planning standpoint, from a capital standpoint overall. And then, the final pages of E.B. Morris just kind of goes through some of the information about the site, some of the information about the usage of the building. So, that's really for each one of your schools, there's an executive summary that goes into what we've found thus far. And I would say, we're not there yet. This is not, this is not a final. We still need those mechanical electrical plumbing notes to go along with that. We will be receiving that within the next couple of weeks. Well, also, as where we are right now, I can't give you anything without telling you a little bit about how much it's valued at. So, we've started that process with a cost estimator, so I can put a number to this in today's terms to kind of give you an understanding of the whole size of improvements that are necessary to look at over both the short term and the long term just to keep the lights on. I mean, I think it's a really, it is really that important of a baseline that you're aware of all the things that need to be done moving forward before you look at anything more broad, more long-term about the improvements of schools here in Lawrence 55. I'm going to pause there for just a second. Said a lot of things, but if there's any discussion about that, I'm glad to have any questions, answer any questions that I can, or talk through some of these components.
So, a couple of things. One, how detailed, when you say you give us cost, will it be line item by line item? Will it be grouped per area, per school, or?
It'll be both. So, that deliverable, the building, the individual building assessment, where we give you those 268 recommendations. Each recommendation will be line itemed, and it'll be, since it's coded as immediate or good or fair, so you'll have kind of a prioritized list of not looking at just the next year, but the next two years, the next three years, the next five years, and beyond.
Okay. And the other one I had was just on the MEP evaluation. I've heard some negative feedback about odors in a couple of the schools, sewer odors. Do you dive to that level of checking the sewer traps and for leaks and things like that, or?
We note it. It is, so it's not destructive. It's visual. And so, what we're doing, we're using not just visual, we're using all of our senses while we're out there. And in fact, I looked at Ford as a for instance on that one. And we do note in the assessment document, the building summary document, that some of those restrooms appear to have some kind of odor problem. It's generally a drainage problem or the vents need to be cleaned out. So, there's a recommendation in there to accomplish, you know, that kind of correction. But all those, that is a good detail, a good thing to know. I don't know that it needs to be part of this major capital improvements plan, but you need to know about it. You know, maintenance needs to know about it and go over there and correct it in the short term.
You mentioned in several, on several schools, you mentioned being ADA compliant in certain areas, whether it be restrooms or some signage. Are we not in compliant right now, or is this if we do any changes, then we have to be in compliant?
Good question, because if you do any major renovations to the facilities, it's going to require, it's going to trigger some of those accessibility requirements. It's also going to trigger some of those mechanical electrical plumbing requirements. It's going to trigger a few of those items. So, we want to capture those so that if you do decide to renovate them, at least you have a working value on what are the things that we have to do as a result of maybe doing an addition, or maybe doing a mechanical upgrade, you know. So, we want to make sure that we capture those in there. Those are probably the least critical items, even though we rank them, because you are grandfathered in based on when the building was constructed or when it was major renovation, the last time it had a major renovation to it. Good? All right. Well, so, I'm going to leave you with that, of course. And again, like last time, please, we're going to bring it up next time. If there are any questions, we can certainly go through it as high level or as in-depth or as in detail that we need to go down on there. Last time, we talked about, as I mentioned, demographics, trends, enrollment. So, there are a couple of questions that we always try to ask with these, and I wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of where we were last time. And I can run through that real quick, or if you have any just preliminary questions from last time, we can do it that way. Either way is fine by me. You want to just kind of get an overview first, and then any additional questions that you might have thought of in the interim? Great. So, one of the things we're always trying to assess is, is this area growing? And if it is, then by how much? So, that's an important factor. In addition to your physical conditions is what is your projected, what's your current enrollment versus what is that projected enrollment kind of overall? So, we employed a certified demographer, a demographer that works in the state of South Carolina and southeast, works in the nation, works, he's done these for the balance of, for more than 30 years, and has worked nearby as well on a lot of these facility demographic assessments as well. You can see in the graph here, this is generally speaking for the entire district. Blue is elementary, orange is the middle school, and then gray is the high school kind of overall. So, even within that little bit of up and downs, you can see, if you go and look at the numbers, you can tell that there's really a consistency in growth patterns if you look at it from your existing demographic standpoint. That is really good from a planning standpoint. I'll mention that again because you don't have to worry about wild shifts in growth or wild declines in growth kind of overall. You know what your population generally as a profile will be for your schools, and then we can map out where changes within the whole district might be a little bit bigger than in other areas kind of overall. Demographics is also two-part as well. The demographer, his role is really to look at the growth based on your current population, what that profile of your population is right now, and the likelihood of some amount of small growth that happens over time. So, what he found is that most of your elementary schools and some of your K-12, or K8s rather, will have moderate growth over that, if you look at that five-year window and that 10-year window. And it will, it will kind of level off at the middle school and the high school level. So, that 10-year baseline, that last column there, you can see the differences between what is your current, your current 135-day enrollment from the beginning of 2021, 2022 kind of overall. Now, I mentioned two parts, so you got to, you really have to understand your existing profile and how that affects enrollment. But the second part is always about the speculative side. You know, what's housing doing in Lawrence County more broadly? What's it doing and how is it affecting Lawrence 55 more specifically? In his reporting, which I think I gave you last time around, he specifically says speculative new home construction plans are not included in that underlying 10-year enrollment window. And that's done on purpose so that we understand and we can separate the variables there. When we look at it from, when we do the calculations after we get that demographic study, we really look at the developments that we know of that are really highly likely to be successful in moving forward here in the county. We, the school district really talked to a lot of folks in the county and beyond to understand what is likely, what is probable here. That does modify that now center column of 10-year baseline forecast to a little bit more aggressive when it comes to growth. You can see, whereas six of your nine schools in the baseline had some amount of enrollment growth, now nearly all, or nine of, or eight out of nine, will see some kind of enrollment growth over time. So, a couple of takeaways from that is a growth is really dependent on speculative development. It's not dependent on your existing demographic trend or your population demographic that you have now. It's really dependent on who comes in to this area. And even with that speculative growth coming in, I would still call it a low-growth profile. And that's also a very good and favorable designation from a planning standpoint when you're looking at enrollment and you're looking at your schools. You can really plan well for that into the future. So, you know, things change in the world. We don't, we don't all, none of us have a crystal ball here, but based on a reasonable kind of approach on what we know today, this seems like, you know, some low growth, some moderate low growth will occur and affect your enrollment kind of overall in each one of these facilities shown up there. But it's not just about, are we growing? It is, can our schools handle it? At the end of the day, that's what it's, that's what it's really all about. So, we did do a test of whether your schools can handle that baseline growth and can it handle that baseline growth, plus the maybe speculative side over that 10-year forecast kind of overall. One thing that I got, I think after the board meeting on this slide, was I show a few percentages in there. What percent of this are you filling up in each one of your schools? And I guess the question, the obvious question is, do we want to be 100%? And the answer to that is no. Really, it depends on the school. For a elementary school, you really would want to be within the 80 to 85%. That gives you the proper amount of space to expect and anticipate bigger cohorts or bigger classes year over year. It also gives you flexibility in knowing that your distribution might not be the same. You might have 23 eighth graders in a class, whereas you might have 25 sixth graders in a class. So, you've got to plan accordingly. And that's why you always want those prices, or those percentages to be lower than 100%. I would, and I think this has vetted out with some of our conversations with the principals and the administrators out on site, is anytime that you get close to that 80% number, you're going to start to feel it as an educator in that facility. The closer that you get to 92%, it's going to be, it's not going to feel great out there. So, I point that out because the high school is obviously already above where it's going to be. Ford is already above kind of where it needs to be. So, those are, if you're looking at priorities, those are kind of how you would prioritize it when you're looking at the dimension of utilization of your facilities. Has that generated any additional follow-up questions that you've had either now or between last time and today?
One of my questions would be, and as you kind of push through and get to the end of your recommendations, will that include, say, examples of the high school in Ford where, based on these percentages, they're full? Will it include kind of a looking at those buildings to say, okay, this room does not need to be a classroom. It needs to be utilized as this space, and your classroom needs to be over here. Will that be part of your recommendations as you finish?
Yes. I can think of, I can't think of that at the high school level, but I know some of the, some of the other facilities, like Waterloo, for instance, there are some spaces that were previously classrooms that have now there are some spaces that were previously classrooms that have now been, been used for programs that might not have existed when Ford was, or when, when Waterloo was constructed. So, there, we've noted, we've noted those in the assessment. And this exercise, we took it at face value. So, we said, all right, a classroom is a classroom. It might be classroom in size, but if it, if it's being used for an itinerary kind of program, it doesn't feed into the enrollment. So, this is a true picture of kind of where you are right now from a utilization standpoint. But as you, next, in that next step, that capital improvements planning next step is, is really, there are several ways to solve the problem. So, there's going to be several different scenarios, several different options. One of those might include converting classrooms for one purpose, or for a different purpose at each one of these, at some of these schools. Any other questions? Dr. Thomas, anything that, that I haven't spoken to specifically that we, you think we should address?
No, I definitely appreciate you reiterating just the percentage as far as exactly what that means for our district. So, that was the one point that I was going to, to ask you to elaborate on, so I appreciate that.
Wonderful. Well, like I said, again, we're just, we're, we're kind of in that, well, you can see where we are. We're at the physical condition assessment results phase, we are in process there. What makes this real, what makes that building assessment real is when I start to put a value to it, right? That's, that's really when you, when you kind of understand the depth and breadth of what we've been doing in the field. And we have started that process, and that's what we'll be reporting on next time with you guys, categorizing those by school, by, by one of those five categories that we mentioned, from site to health, safety, and security, and really getting an understanding of what that value is in, in the five years and 10 years of window for, from a maintenance planning standpoint. With that baseline, we're also then going to flip over to, well, how do we solve everything else? How do we, how do we long-term look at the district from an improvement standpoint? And how can we make wise decisions that, that are in line with how we maintain our facilities in the short term kind of overall? And then finally, you know, the capital improvements plan that's selected will be evaluated from a cost standpoint overall as well. I mentioned a little homework, I'm going to leave this with you guys. Really, when you're talking about, we've been focusing on the short term. We've given a lot of information about the schools, and that's certainly important. And we're focused on that maintenance plan first and foremost, again, because of the, its baseline function for the school district. But when you're talking about a broader, more long-term plan, it really is important to know where you want to go from, from, from a district standpoint. So, I'll, I'll leave this, this four questions with you to kind of understand, at least get in that mindset about where do we want to go as, as a district. I've got homework for Dr. Thomas and crew too, and it's a lot longer than that. But, but I'll leave that with you guys, and I'll, I'll send that along digitally so that you can have and be prepared for the discussion that, that comes about when we talk about capital improvements planning.
Might want to talk to Dr. O about 56, not us.
Uh-oh. Does it say 55 or 56?
Says 56.
Oh, well, how about this, I'll correct that, and then I'll send that to you.
That's what we're all mumbling about.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. Well, apologies for that, I should know better.
But you'll send that in an email to Dr. Thomas and Ms. Wilson Morris.
Yes, yep, that's right. All right. That's all I had, I'll take that 56 off the, off the, off the screen here.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for your time this, this evening.
Very much.
Thank you.
We have a three-year program, you know, what we have, we have a three-year program.
Adjourned.
They said elementary? That was our school, I didn't even have it.
We haven't at the other elementary schools. I don't think we have it at Worldwood. We don't have it at Worldwood this year, but we had it last year.
Okay. Because I was thinking about that, it's was ages, because, you know, they don't do four days, and I was kind of wondering how that would merge into this.
Mr. Thompson, we had another question.
Does it make a difference age-wise, like, well, space-wise? I was just asking Dr. Thomas about, I know, like, you have three-year-old kindergarten in some of the schools, and it's for space as a, you know, accordingly, because some of them are in and out and don't go all day. That's being taken into consideration as well?
Okay, okay. At their programs, yes.
Because I know, you know, I, I still think this, the next five years that there's going to be a pre-school explosion, I don't know why. Because it is with daycares and all of those kinds of things. And so, with graduating students and employment, if they are working close by or living here, that even our graduates from 19, 20, whatever, you know? If they decide, it may be more younger ones, younger students coming to us. And that being said, I didn't know if that was considered as such, so.
Right, and we do track that, we ask that, that, all that information to make sure that we can see a trend line. Because you would, if that happens, you can start to, you can start to see it trickle down. Or, or every single year, just three-year-olds. You could actually, because it's a, it's a half-day, it's a half-day program, right? So, you got, you actually have two data points there over time, the, the morning and the afternoon, we're getting the same, whether it's on.
It does, okay.
It's not going to be different. We, we're, we're looking at that, we'll talk to you later more, just to be sure that we're sure.
Are there any further questions? All right, if someone would like to make a motion, we can adjourn our work session.
I'll make the motion that we end the session.
Thank you.
I'll second the adjournment.
Thank you, all those in favor? That's unanimous, we're adjourned.
I know it.
And is it not, is it not happening?
I didn't realize Sanders was that old.